...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Joe, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a good day. Do we have a public discussion before we start?
No, we don't.
Too late.
At least I made it on time this time.
Did you?
Yes. Here's my, here's my son's adopted dad.
I forgot.
I made it.
In trouble?
I did, I forgot him, it was like five after he's gone.
No, you forget me?
No, it's been sent for three hours, I don't know what's the problem.
I keep trying to get old Scott Willard in your range for the summer, so. Don't know what that third attempt was about.
I don't know what it is about me there.
No.
I said I don't know why it's going to them either.
Tell me what's your range due down south?
Uh, my test will just test six tenths.
Really?
Yeah, it ain't going down there, dead here.
And who else?
Not mine, I still have mine.
Next week I'm gonna have somebody else with me.
Where are you going?
Oh, I go to Wisconsin until November.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Until November?
Yeah.
Really? Wow.
Go there for six months and then come here for six months.
It's pretty smart, there in the summer and here in the winter.
It's too hot down here and it's just too cold up there in the winter.
So I'll be training a new person next week, so if you guys want, go easy on them.
Or if you could go back to serve your sins or something.
Yeah, I bet. Back to the workforce.
Hope that my basically like your guys will.
That's what retired people do, come south in the winter, when the winter go back in the summer.
I'll be retired for the rest of my life, I'm just gonna work. No, if that works out, write books, we can all figure out how to do it.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna wait that way, I'll never get a burger.
That we didn't have much to worry about.
What?
That we didn't have much to worry about.
Seven thirty at night on a Saturday, somebody pulled the fire alarm up at the show.
Really?
We were open anyway because they had to leave. I jumped out to leave at eight thirty, Sonico was already up. We were trying to be really quiet, her, we're gonna get her ready and all of a sudden they all looked at me like, "What'd you do?" I'm like, "Hey, tight." Fire alarm's go off, they'll say, "We got the lead, we need them," yeah, we probably need to leave the room.
Where would track me down?
We were at, at Middelsley.
Middelsley? Where you staying at?
Sheridan.
Oh, wow. I had people tell I.
They had, they had blocked off rooms for the parents, but I just told them no, I just, I didn't want them to block, just needed a room. And the guy was really nice, he says, "I'll still just give you that, at that price." "Oh girl, that's wonderful, thank you." Check in, he's, "Oh, you're at the wedding party," I'm like, "Well, if it means I get a cheaper room, sure, I'm at the wedding party, as long as I'm not in the wedding party." It might not have been the best choice, I wouldn't stay, it might have been louder. No, it was.
Sort of like me, you wanna be.
It was, it was in the club, you had to have a card to get, so I'm like, "Nicole, you can't cut me." No kids, good job to me, it was that much.
That'd be the whole person bomb right off, I wouldn't do that.
That should be fun.
What?
She wants to become a god.
I was thinking about it.
Which one?
Hmm, no, maybe, I don't know, I don't know if I'll go that way. Let's see. I'm tired of the greatness killing now.
Well, that's part of life, they'll re-.
Well, I know that's part of life, but I don't want that life to burn yet. I'm not ready to let it all go green. I'm not that old yet, or old enough for that. I don't know where to come from. I think it may be going black.
Yeah, like that one. That's growing out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I do some.
I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's what I was making.
But Doug and her now.
Well, all three of them.
I have a four and I can't.
Oh, I know. I'll be shocking everybody if they.
Troy Shepherd.
That's what they want? Troy even came up this morning and I double checked and asked him.
Yeah, that's what they want.
What they want, not them.
You what?
That's what they want, not them.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably after next year he's gone. She's right, she's, don't she?
Yeah, she's right, she's a genuine, she's.
He was kinda surprised where he's from, kinda waiting out for the whole insurance forms.
Well, I think that's why they left Doug on there, so if they don't get up to sign them all, so. Should we have a meeting this week?
That's what I'm.
Why would they not have it next week after they opened it's on Monday?
It said, moved to April nine, or May nine, which was. You got a copy of them? At EMS, what Jane's now at EMS.
No, they don't have one next week. They've been slammed in.
Maybe Jane, nobody told Jane.
Jane's been doing forever. Okay, that was a poor choice of words, Jane has been doing the good stuff and harassing me on it, so. Why would he not know?
Well, you gotta remember his. Looks like all three commissioners and everyone else in the world.
I didn't either, don't feel bad.
That's what make you one.
It's kinda supposed to be in my office to be posted, but. I, I just noticed that they want on the list and I'm not trying to.
Hold it on.
You cleared all the ground up and everything for them?
Toby used the rock, fray, bridge, freight roads of control.
Right. Should I have a second?
Who's there to get the control last week? Did you get it fixed?
They didn't get them, they're, they're not supposed to, they swapped them out, right?
Yeah, Nancy called my line.
Wrong, wrong number. I wonder if they didn't answer.
Yeah, they didn't answer, they just called.
So they said one time for their, not working anything?
They have them all disconnected because of the construction. Yeah, they had prom out there, no AC. The boys took all their tux jackets, their tux shirts and put their tux vests back on with their bow ties, I think they're quite interesting.
Girls couldn't do that though.
Girls won't do that. They went through a lot of water and a lot of tea that night.
It was, they got to my hood, dropped it.
I asked them, I said, "Did you mind, maybe I might be saying that you might wanna told them when they booked that?" What did you think about it?
We got all those, we knew it was gonna have to come out. So, they told all this is gonna have to come out. No, we had to sit down there for the shit, we don't have to do those there.
Yeah. Let's see, they went out on bed once already, that, it was not very good.
Those markers are blanked, but they didn't sign it either, so I'm not sure.
There's a little one?
Maybe it's in, I think it's blanket, it says preset two hundred.
The statements all come in. I don't know. Do you have a seat here if you want? Do you have a seat here if you want?
Mary, Mary Swift, she probably. He was happy with the last one. Well, until we done that concrete work since.
Did you throw my phone in there?
No.
Oh, you made it in.
Oh, here it is. I told them, I was sure that the graduation on Friday, so I said, "Sir, are you, are you just for four?" We can't legitally tell me that. I don't, you won't make it back. I was thinking it was just thirty-five hours during the challenge.
Four hours too far, I didn't look in the.
So, I don't miss it.
They take you over.
Take you to.
One to the shower, you do, so what do you say you open the glass?
How can we all do a little bit of rain? I have to be go a little bit of rain.
Well, December would land.
I don't like white, I just don't like white.
You don't know that that one's around now, but probably is.
I feel pretty good though. I don't get a habit very.
The airport room, like.
I don't know anything close to that.
North.
They've all over a hundred mile an hour.
Well, I don't get like thirty on the highway.
If you got a.
Okay, thirty eight. That'll be like a day.
Don't ride too much, looking back down.
Four blocks, I drive two more. It could have walked.
What? You're getting, I'm, you're like.
It's their game.
They lost. They lost. They were, they were at one point, twenty plus points ahead.
I was away there that.
At the very last minute of the game, they lost by two. They just put their, lay the ball, they, they just were taking stupid shots. They screwed it up, they, it was their fault that they lost. They just wanted to go to the other one.
And here's the key.
My funny there.
You ready to cut off?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Go ahead, maybe.
Well, I, I wasn't ready last week, this storm kinda hit at me off.
Yeah.
Cause it's pretty.
My bottoms are pretty, that one, west side's a little rough.
How long has it been in that file?
This, this one's been four years.
Make one of them brood.
That's my cell.
Through the cross.
No, they can't, I didn't hear my phone, anyway, okay. Well, I think the commissioner for the shot's still out there, but they don't. Look, everybody else that was killed.
Not a big deal, I just, I knew that. I gotta go to England, Asia, this afternoon. I need to, that was five fine people. I'm gonna meet with that people tomorrow. Oh yeah, I've got two windshield blocks and I have two of them. I felt that behind that hole and then get that person look out. Never know that, but they done said. Said, "He's gonna be a piggyback, maybe he might be in private." I know I never ticked. Oh yeah, well, that's on your beat. Can't. Use that department's. Yeah, I used to fly in after. Can't curse going on business traffic, that's my four mile stretch, it's not a cost over two thousand, but. Cowboys, that kind of. That's just gonna be y'all in the middle.
What is that four miles for?
Corner east of Burrows, proceeding to four miles north.
He got smart?
See you in contract agreement for. Careful.
I think sidewalk rail's more dangerous.
Putting yellow lines, no passing zones, white lines.
Three what?
Putting yellow lines, no passing zones, and white lines.
Yeah, always, I'm not gonna be white lines, I'm just gonna be yellow lines, going in the middle.
They can put yellow lines too, white lines. They wanna put it to roads there.
Um, do you know?
I know.
I thought she said she was coming up, but I didn't get out, but there you come up.
Contract with West State, Trump got your bank on dredging machine. You reading about the airport? Call favor? Okay, next is Troy Shepherd and Red Murrow's representing officer and any planning as receiving officer for the.
That's a request.
No three of them.
What's a requisitioning officer?
Requisitioning officer?
What does that do?
It's the one that assigns the POs.
Annual detention contract from Texas County.
Detention something?
Jibnawas.
I'm sorry, wanna get a copy of that?
I'm in my second childhood.
What?
Nothing.
My motion approved. Call favor?
Hi. My favor is signed.
Uh, pay for the six for reader contractors. Uh, pay the rest of the reader contractors for the fair. We paid one point, almost one point seven.
One point seven on buying, the total?
No, the total was two point three, is that right?
It's just the statement, that's the one point seven?
No, that's, that's, that's a running total, so this payment was three hundred, a whole, three hundred and some thousand. What?
Uh, three fifty-one, one seventy-four fifteen.
Move for approval.
Can I go?
Call in favor.
Hi. They're a lot quicker than the Jiffy Tramp, I tell you that.
Is there any in the full scene business? Second.